Good morning, Commissioners. Public hearing February 12, 2020. Chair Carroll.
Here.
Commissioner Blaine.
Here.
Commissioner Jacob.
Here.
Commissioner Chen. Commissioner Davidson. Commissioner Goldblum.
Here.
Commissioner Hestoxson. Commissioner Hope Bissitt.
Here.
Commissioner Luffey.
Here.
Commissioner O'Shaughnessy.
Here.
Commissioner Ross.
Here.
Good morning, Commissioners. We're going to start the Preservation Department Agenda with public hearing items this morning. First item number one, LPC 19-30601, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the Brooklyn Brooklyn Block 262, Block 7503, 13 Garden Place in the Brooklyn Heights Historic District. A re-revival style house built in 1845. The application is to construct a rooftop bulkhead and replace skylights and modify the roof.
Abby, just before you start, I just want to make another sad announcement about another loss in our preservation community. Jack Taylor passed away last Thursday night. Many of us know him as a very committed preservation advocate for many, the protection of many, many buildings and districts in the city. He was the founder of the drive to protect the Ladies' House Historic District, bringing together a consortium of seven groups to advocate for the designation of the Ladies' House Historic District. And of course, we know that he participated in every application that came to a public hearing in that district with many of us talking every Tuesday. So his commitment was recognized by the Victorian Society of Menorah with a lifetime achievement award, and we saw his dedication and his commitment firsthand. So it would be very nice to inform all of us, sorry to have to announce these sad news.
Good morning, Commissioners. Abby, Rowan Preservation Staff. This application is to construct a rooftop bulkhead and to raise the roof of the rear parapet at 13 Garden Place, which is located on the east side of Garden Place between Drowlin and State Streets in the Brooklyn Heights Historic District. As you can see here, this is the proposal. It's the rear of the building and a proposed to raise this portion and a rooftop bulkhead. So the roof will be visible from the north at Drowlin Street, can you see that here? And from the south on Garden Place, here. And then for breaking the street wall at on Drowlin Street. So just so that you know, these mockups that you're seeing most of is for the work of 15 Garden Place, which we'll be reviewing next. So they have created these sort of renderings to show you what will be visible for this proposal, and that's why these exist. So yeah, if you guys here can discuss the proposal a little bit.
Good morning, Commissioners. Michael Ngwee from Backstreet Architects, William Connor. So this is 13 Garden. You can see we're doing a few different things. One is we're doing something similar to what we've done in some other houses as well as what they've already done on 11 Garden Place, which is retaining the core building in the back. These are about five, six months in the back, although it's a better effect for canting it back. We're also creating a bulkhead with an extending neighbor's chimney and doing a still like for air conditioning finish. Here is from the front and the side. It will be stuck out with the line and extending its new roof. It's really visible, mostly visible kind of at the angle. You can also see where it extends the chimney on the side, but the part that's fairly visible is kind of this portion right here. Nothing visible from the front and from the side again. You can kind of see that angle and you can see the raise of the chimney. And from the back, you can see kind of the side walls and so forth. Just gives you some pictures of the side as well as some of the mockup photos, just kind of when you're on there, some photos of just streets and neighbors surrounding. There's been a lot of work to get rid of these things down in the house. And then just to give you the plan of that, the bulkhead has been kind of pushed as far back this way as possible. Air conditioning is not visible and it's just this way. And for the chimney, we are extending.
Do you have a section through, yes, showing the height?
There you go. You can see the heights here.
I can't.
Yeah, sorry. But if you're starting at finished floor to this point is eight feet, and then it can't suck from, it can't suck down. This little height from roof to a feet is visible, but this is not visible for as much as the, this is, you could lower this and this could become a little less visible. This is pretty much as low as the, we can feel the ground downstairs.
Can I ask a question about the, like, wing walls and the roof? Is that a code requirement that it be so tall or like they were not kind of projecting up as much in the?
Are you talking about the, with the sidewalls right?
Right, right. Are you all just that vertical extension?
I think.
You can see that from the slot.
Yeah. I think you're describing.
That, huh?
Right. It's actually a build to be angled down for.
Is there a reason why you were going for it or?
No, I have a feeling that the reason would prefer to run it straight. I think water roofing on an angle is more difficult than just a, or a leak element tee, but it could definitely go.
Okay, are there any other questions?
Before you go on, we had advertised the skylights, the proposed skylights at the front, but since they will not be visible, those will be taken, they will reduce level. And just to clarify for the applicant, although the drawings say that this will be keepers, they are proposing stuck out.
Excellent. Okay. We'll go to hell, please. Let me pull this back. More questions? Judy Stanton?
Judy Stanton from the Brooklyn Heights Association. This is really short and sweet. Committee has reviewed the proposal for 13 Garden Place and it's approved on the Brooklyn Heights Historic District, and we support the application and present it.
Thank you. Are there any final questions? Does it take a motion to close the hearing? Call of favor? Any thoughts?
I have to say, I, our best friends lived in this house for, as Judy Stanton knows, for years and years and years. I know the house intimately, my daughter's best friend, Brooklyn, et cetera, et cetera, as well as the next one, which I'll disclose that relationship to in a minute. I think, I think the suggestion by the architect should be taken up that there's no reason this needs to be A plus or, so I would just lower working with staff to reduce visibility. The visibility that does exist is minimal, I think, that no reason to make it any more than it needs to be, particularly in the back. The back of this block is a beautiful donut, and I think people particularly love this donut, and I think to see more of that from even the private gardens is unnecessary.
Thank you, Fred. Everybody agree with A plus? Okay.
Angle goes in.
Name what the, the part of us.
If I can read, you can hear my voice, it's not so great. In matter of 13 Garden Place in the Brooklyn Heights Historic District, this is an application to construct a rooftop bulkhead, replace skylights, and modify the roof. I note that the building's style, scale, materials, and details are modern features that contribute to the special architectural historic character of the Brooklyn Heights Historic District. With approval, noting that the work will not damage or conceal any significant features of the building, that the bulkhead and railings will be set back from the front and rear facades, that the simple massing and sloped roof of the bulkhead will be typical of utilitarian roof accretions found at buildings of this type and age in this historic district, that the raised roof will be set back from the rear parapet, therefore the historic massing of the building will be maintained, that the work will not diminish any significant unifying characteristics of this row. I find also that the height of the bulkhead is slightly higher than it needs to be, and that working with staff, the, I'm looking to lower that bulkhead.
And we'll look, explore lowering that parapet wall, angling the parapet walls over there, the, the part of walls over there.
Oh, yeah, that's right, this wall. Thank you.
Call of favor?
All right, moving down to number two, right next door, this is the LPC 19-33275, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the Brooklyn Block 262, Block 4 of 15 Garden Place in the Brooklyn Heights Historic District. A re-revival style house built in 1846. The application is to modify entrance and windows, raise them to the parapets, and excavate the rear yard.
Good morning, Commissioners. Abby, Rowan Preservation Staff. This application is for work at 15 Garden Place, just located on the east side of Garden Place between Drowlin and State Streets in the Brooklyn Heights Historic District, currently stored at the one which is with that. So there are several aspects to this proposal. First is work at the front facade, including replacing windows with black painted wood 606 simulated doublet windows, replacing the modern paired doors with a single door, side lights and panes. And replacing the wood cornice with a black finished fiberglass cornice, matching the neighboring building's cornice at Garden Place, here. So this work is before you Commissioners because the proposed black finish will not need keeping the historic color cloud of the building and the overall replacement of the cornice. The next aspect of this proposal is to enlarge a lockline window. There, as we did there. Level one, one, two, a two, double con windows. At the root, the proposal is to enlarge the parapet and raising the roof of the rear facade. The work at the roof will be visible from the south and from the north, through that break in the street wall at Drowlin Street. And, for you, here you can see the work from the south. And here's from that break in the street wall, which we looked at recently. And finally, the proposal includes excavating the rear yard by feet from the rear lockline. Do you have any of your discussion with the proposal?
Again, Commissioners, Michael Ngwee from Backstreet with Frank the Biolo. So this is 15 Garden Place. They are different owners. We just happen to be working on two buildings at the same time, both our residents, I guess they're all, they've been asked at some of the other conversations. But first of all, that's a temporary. The contractor who did this room can leave mockups without the consent, or else they were a little confusing for everybody, but that I understand is true. So starting with the door, we are basically matching the door at nine. These are four houses that are built around the same time. We're actually theorizing that actually that the 911 may have been built in a similar time period and then right after, it's maybe 15, 16, there are some slight differences. 15's had a little bit of work done to it a while ago. It's been intact since it became a facade, but a lot of the details of the script from the cornice, the doors are new, so we're, we're matching a lot of what they have in mind, in the block. On the roof, and it's showing me why I answered the question on 13 directly, it is amazing and they don't like it, like on the end, but we are raising the, the wall here and not canting it back because being able to that and it looked bad because of how weird from the side, but I think if we raise the side, this parapet in this direction, which can now see better, you know, photo. So I think if we raise this on the side and it's to match, it will not look odd, whereas if this were to cant down, I think it would, I think this should cant down, so that the , you can see during the same thing with the roof line here. We also have two air conditioning units and a, and a generator. You can see the double windows here, but there's a single window. The generator itself is visible. So actually, this is the chimney I'm picturing, the previous one, but here's our generator, and you can, you can see it. It will be pushed as far back as possible, but we do believe you can see at the top, you know, 12 inches or so of it. And then you can see here where the single window is that will be put in the double.
Are there any questions?
Can't have very good, you know.
I'm sorry?
So this is some steel, it's going to be lowered?
Yeah, so right now, good debate, right now, the companies, um, through two already were providing a generator, will not install that generator between steel. They want it sitting on top of the steel. Every other mechanical system, we install, we install between the steel. We have our way, it will be between the steel even if we have to widen that steel, so they have a lot of space around their generator. The generators only access from the front, so I don't know why they would not install it between the steel, but that would be our number one choice.
So if you could make that happen, it would lower a little bit?
It would actually probably lower it here, but I had a major opinion now from you two back where people sit. Maybe if we lengthen it and help to negotiate that.
Are there any other questions? Take public testimony and come back to Judy Stanton?
Judy Stanton from the Brooklyn Heights Association. Our committee has reviewed this proposal for 15 Garden Place and it's in fact on the Brooklyn Heights Historic District, and we support the application and present it.
Thank you. Thank you. Jennifer Leno?
Good morning. Please be gone with the historic district council. The historic district's council has no objection to this proposal on aesthetic grounds, however, with a significant amount of excavation this project reveals extending to the maximum view of duct of the lot, we are concerned about its impact on this building and other projects out, designing historic structures. These are reasonably ancient buildings with foundations which do not design for this kind of project in mind. Landmark division has the authority to compel along with them, and you're considered a structural engineer, and we urge the agency to take the steps necessary to ensure that this excavation is bound to be at most careful. Thank you.
Thank you, John Geisler. Surprise.
Good morning. Is this working or not at all?
It is, which is speak up as well.
Okay. I'm here on behalf of professional archaeologists in New York City, Pannick, to call your attention to the application 15 Garden Place, directed from 1846, located in the Brooklyn Heights Historic District, 1806. The application rules excavation of the rear yard, even extending existing basements. Although the extension will not improve the last five feet of the yard, excavation to a standing basement will show the impact of possible location of the building's pretty pit by law and typically two feet in the rear pocket line, even as dimensions, oh, even as dimensions are predictable, usually five to six feet in diameter and approximately nine feet. While the previous location and size can be anticipated, its contents are unique. Given the age of the building, such a pretty pit undoubtedly was a return back to our future, one of archaeological significance unless it continues on the red as it has impacted the past. Once abandoned and filled, the pretty pit is an archaeological treasure trove of information pertaining to, in this case, the building's 19th century occupants, as well as the conditions surrounding the features of betterment and fulfillment. This information, this is information obtained only through archaeology and the city's historic districts, relating to 19th and 18th century domestic structures, are where these features and the information they contain are found. Pannick urges the commissioners to include consideration of the archaeological potential in this backyard and may add if others like it before it is destroyed. Thank you for your attention and the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this application? And we do also have a resolution from Committee Board Two, recommending approval of the application. And I'd like to mention I had a resolution from Committee Board Two on previous application part. Would you like to respond?
With regards to the excavation, our office, landlord, there are no landlords, we treat it seriously, and we met with both neighbors, we have party world agreements with both neighbors, voluntarily, we voluntarily hired to see somebody who uses for other projects to monitor both. They've already been on site, they're, we're monitoring in two different ways. All parties, the neighbors, as well as our client, can get those reports real time. And we always, when we're doing any rear yard addition or any work in the rear yard, take the pretty, pretty seriously, and I forgot the person's name, who continuously comes to a lot of our sites, and he's there before anybody else is there, once we open it, and we just, they all have research.
Are there any last questions?
So happy that the archaeology was brought up. I don't know if this is just myth or fact, but I've always heard that Garden Place was on the site of the Livingston, estate, Robert Livingston, sign of the Declaration of Rights Estate, and that there's still a wall, something like that, isn't there, something in the back yards? I don't know which side, I just, oh, no, this is kind of something you hear about. I see Judy Stanton nodding her head though, so she must know more. I just want to also go and record as, again, thanking John Geisler for coming and bringing up the archaeology, but I think the explanation was criminal by the applicant, and I think it's important that the staff now, working with the applicant, go slow on what they find in that rear yard. It's a very important archaeological study.
Are there any other comments? Thoughts on visibility of the parapet wall or the generator?
I just want to make sure that it's clear that I don't believe the applicant, the archaeologist, that he's careful about structural issues about the art of all, and so, so I'm not having to come wrong, are you one of the archaeologists?
He does, he's aware of privies, and before he goes in, he does take a careful look.
Yeah, so, okay, sorry.
Well, let's open it up.
Sorry. I'm so sorry, I can't remember the person's name, but he's not strongly aware to have to call, for example, there's no machines in our digouts, everything's by hand. They aren't doing, I guess, archaeology per se, I don't necessarily know how to file or do that, but, but the people who are doing the work are the same excavation team that we've used over and over again, it's all by hand, taken out by bucket, no heavy machinery. And there's a person who comes in specifically for the preview, but we deal with a lot of it, but based on a lot of our sites and things, not just archaeology, but structural language choice, everything that's, that's, that can't be knocked, minus by input dumpster, is all of our, landlord, landlord.
What happens to the artifacts?
That's a good question. He, he collects, I think he's a collector.
Is it?
Forward is his name, but it's not, it's not, it's not a CD agent.
He's a picker and follows archaeological things.
Yes, and. He's been in the, very, very expensive.
Going into a public repository, goes into a sketch, collects.
I guess, I mean, for decades, he's been on a lot of sites in both Manhattan and Brooklyn Heights.
And I don't think there actually is a public repository for private artifacts, are considered private property, but one could photograph and submit them to our file or photograph and document them to our files. Yes, Judy?
Now, I have a question. The, you were placing the cornice with other last looks that sees the condition of the house?
So the existing part is at some, at one point was stripped. It doesn't matter, it doesn't, on the left, you can kind of see, you can see the top face, it's kind of the element on the left and right to a certain degree, this top facial board, it's got some relishes, but this is all very appealing and so forth. Dentals were, were once removed. It has a bit of issue. It is not that it's not restorable, we could probably go up there and we could restore that, but I don't think a lot of it was up there. I think that's been worked on, I mean, a long time ago, but it don't, the same backing that's here, if you take a look at the other, through the other trees, it's not as if they want, I think some of the distinct wood elements and stripped it to be done, this is just slightly different and old, but, but not original.
And Mike, it does have the brick frieze or apron below the projected wood elements, the face brick that's painted black, part of the, you seen the tax vote, is that correct?
This piece?
The lower portion, right?
Yeah, it does, yeah.
So staff is pointing that out as likely original re-revival feature, whether or not the cornice has been repaired or replaced over time, I'm not sure.
And it changed the dentals?
It looks like it from the dark shadow.
The dentals aren't there anymore, you see the dust on the tax boat. They're not there now. The brick is there.
Any last questions? So we have a few direct components, we set up against the door, the cornice.
There are dentals there. They're still there.
The door is, and the cornice, and the rooftop work as well as the excavation. So does anyone want to know specifically about this top work?
I think the origin, the retention, and restore.
There is a reading. And I think, you know, actually, the proposal, because we're working on at staff level is to return the windows to the 606 configuration, so the, we did earlier, six of three archival cornices go along that as well as the three archival door configuration. It is a matter of 19-33275, 15 Garden Place, Brooklyn Heights Historic District. A re-revival style roadhouse built in 1846. The application is to modify the entrance and windows, raise the roof and parapets, and excavate the yard. I note that the building's sound scale, materials, and details are modern features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Brooklyn Heights Historic District. I recommend approval with modifications, finding that the work will not damage or conceal any significant features of the building or site, that the block can ensure closed entrance and doors, and windows will be harmonized with the changes which have occurred on this road over time, that the proposed entrance and doors, consisting of a single panel and raised floor with multi-light panes, and side lights, will be keeping with the re-revival star character. The building has the raised portion of the roof that is set back from the start, the historic massing of the house is being maintained with that dimension and significant unifying characteristics of this road. The arrangement of the wall and the window, the care of double con windows will not diminish the overall stop barrier, solidity of the side wall, that the increase in height of the parapet extension is will be minimal and will not affect the stability of the foundation of each of the buildings, and will conceal the most visible toxic chemicals. That the proposed excavation will not extend to the rear block line and will be set back five feet from this main block line to provide an area for strategic planning of the rear yard, and that the excavation and related, um... And that the excavation and related underpinnings will be designated to the Department of Urbanism's regulations under the supervision of licensed professional engineers or registered architects to protect the buildings, the sods, and the adjacent buildings. However, I find that the existing symbol of the cornice above the building for trees is an historic feature that is an important characteristic of the re-provival style of the building. Therefore, I demand that the existing wood cornice be removed. And that the applicants were enabling the end wall at the back of the floor.
Right, that's the same finding as for the last project on the rear basement floor. Not at the end wall in between the two buildings.
All clear, any opposed?
Next up is item number three, LPC 19-33447. Application for certificate of appropriateness number of Manhattan, block six fifteen, block twenty-nine, ninety-seven Greenwich Avenue, Greenwich Village Historic District. Commercial building designed by Flat Fire and Bell Architects, built certain two thousand and two. Application is to replace ground door infill, replace signage, install monies, and refinish windows and store windows.
My first question, we need a stack for applications. The item before you is ninety-seven Greenwich Avenue, located at the corner of Greenwich Avenue and West twelve. It's written in the first word, four, eight, nine. The work difference removal and replacement of storefront infill, as well as the relocation and redesign of the exitway at Greenwich. Having the facade, this is below. It also includes the removal of the existing metal and glass canopy with associated signage and replaces it with a fixed metal awning or steel hanging letters at both Greenwich Avenue and twelve, West twelve facade. The existing bracket sign above the storefront at Greenwich Avenue may be replaced with a new slightly smaller bracket sign in the same location. And the final portion of work is retaining and refinishing windows and architectural features around the building. The applicant is here to discuss the conditions and actions.
Thank you, Olivia, and I just wanted to introduce Olivia to the commissioners and the company. This is Olivia's first CVA application, she's definitely a CVA plus now. Although we're happy to have her finally on the floor here.
Good morning, I'm Sean Bosler with Turkins Eastman, we're the architects for the renovation with Equinox here. As Olivia mentioned, this is ninety-seven Greenwich Avenue. The proposal is to renovate and modernize the storefronts, which coincide with a large interior renovation, which we're working on Equinox. Building went through a public hearing, I believe, in nineteen ninety-eight with Flat Fire and Bell and White. And what we are proposing to do is to basically renovate the ground floor of the storefront, paint the, paint the mullions above, replace the canopy, and relocate the entrance door. Project is located on the corner of Greenwich and West twelve. This is an elevation of Greenwich Avenue showing the building and how it situates within there and then across the street opposite on Greenwich Avenue. This is on West twelve, showing how the building relates to the adjacent buildings on West twelve street and across the street. This, at the top, is the existing building. As you can see, it has very clean architectural lines to it, which we're respecting and keeping with this renovation. But what we're proposing to do is to replace the metal and glass awning, which one is slightly, a little bit outdated and also would not work with some of the proposals that we have on the interior for how the storefront relates to the interior. So the proposal is to, is to remove this. Basically, everything from this line below would get removed and replaced. Will be replaced with a new steel awning with much smaller, simpler, more elegant letters than what's there. Spelling out just Equinox rather than Equinox Fitness Club. The architectural lines would be the same, we would pick up the lines from above, as does the rhythm of the existing. But we would move the door one way over, which you'll see will coincide with the floor plans for the new retail and lodge layout. But the, but the door does pick up the, this vertical line here, which is very important and sort of anchors itself on that, so we're trying to respect the geometry of the facade with this renovation. One of the, one of the key parts of this, as we were working through this with staff, is while there is precedent in the neighborhood for changing the color of the mullions from an aluminum color to a dark color, which you can see in some of the adjacent buildings on West twelve, as well as on Greenwich. One of the important things was to keep this metal panel a light color on the building. So we're proposing only, only the mullions will become the darker color and this metal panel will stay a lighter color, so we don't lose the accent of the cornice on top. The awning itself, much like the previous awning, isn't a full awning, it's just a portion of the facade. So starting from the edge of this window to the corner of the building on Greenwich Street and on West twelve, with a little break in the corner, and then over to this line over here. Also, what you'll see is we are relocating some of the mechanical louvers, which are currently on the front of the building, right here, in a very prominent location. So we're proposing to relocate those within the transom on the side of the building. Just in looking at the scope of work, this is the area that's affected, that we're proposing. It is a new steel awning with these sort of vertical ribs and it can give it a slight, nice simple articulation. The signage itself, the floor plan, one of the, one of the main drivers of this is, this is the existing floor plan. Where you could come in and there's some meeting rooms and things like that. But the program of Equinox has changed considerably over the years. They need less retail and more juice and lounge and more private accommodations for the meeting rooms. So the proposal on the inside, which is part of the larger renovation, is to increase the size of juice bar and lounge. But by doing that, this is why we need to move the door down a bay. This is an image of the existing building and this is the proposed, showing a little bit more simple, elegant signage on it. We've gone through the details, a lot of these, they all work with the existing structure, with the existing, also the existing rhythm of the storefronts. The doors itself are a little bit less commercial looking, like the existing doors, being that the aluminum doors have been in the storefront. These are, are a little bit, a little bit more sensitive to the door, the entering. Just some of the details showing how, we're very sensitive with how the vertical lines pick up the geometry up above. And also the relocation of just a little bit here. There's some of the details of the awning, just a very simple, clean awning with the ribs which line up with the vertical mullions of the storefronts. There is a brownstone base which sort of wraps around the building. It's taller on West twelve and it's shorter on Greenwich, this remains, this is being untouched. If anything is reclaimed and restored. And some of the enlarged details here. With the, with the signage, this, the existing signage is actually, the vertical signage here is about twelve feet. Our proposal is to keep the top of the signage where it is, but have a shorter signage, so that it actually gets a little bit smaller. And then on the, on the skirt of the, of the awning, as you can see, it's Equinox Fitness Club now. It would be, the proposal is just to have Equinox, so a little bit, a little bit more simple, a little bit more elegant. We have thought about lighting, this is all integrated into the, into the facade. Where there's sconces at the entrance are replacing the existing lighting, which you can see here, with a little bit smaller pinpoint lighting on the signage, so all of that would be a part of it. Everything up above would be repainted mullions to match everything below. But the own, the work itself of the replacement of the storefront physically is on the bottom.
Okay, thank you, are there any questions? Is there anyone who'd like to speak on this application? And we have a resolution from Community Board to recommend approval of the application. If there are any questions, we'll kind of motion close the hearing. Boslers, I think they're relatively minor changes that are consistent with, I think, the original design of the building in nineteen ninety-eight. And I think the signage and the storefront also, as well as the color palette are, you know, fit comfortably with the street's makeup. Greenwich Avenue.
In matter of LPC 19-3347, ninety-seven Greenwich Avenue, Greenwich Avenue Historic District, Greenwich Village, excuse me, Historic District. A commercial building designed by Flat Fire and Bell Architects in building two thousand and two. Application is to replace ground door infill, replace signage, install awnings, and refinish windows and store front framing. Recommend approval finding the proposed storefront infill design is keeping with the proportions and details of the existing and that black finish will harmonize with the brick facade. If the change in location remains at the Greenwich Avenue facade will not detract from the building's base and the details in the north surround will harmonize with the remaining infill throughout the building. If the proposed fixed metal awnings retaining signage will be well integrated with the storefront design and will remain some certain anti-architectural features of the building. But the proposed vertical metal glade sign will be smaller than the existing sign and will remain in the same location as the original sign. That painting of windows and other architectural details throughout the building will not provide consistency or finishes throughout the facade and that the work will not detract from the building or the street's makeup.
All clear, any opposed?
Right, item number four is LPC 19-27198, an application for certificate of appropriateness in borough Manhattan, block eleven twenty-three, block nine eight seven, fifty-three, fifty-seven, west seventh, upper west side, Central Park West Historic District. Three Renaissance Roadhouse designed by Charles Beukin Company and built in eighteen ninety-one and altered in nineteen twenty-nine by Frank S. Lincoln. Application is to alter the building's base and area width.
Good morning, commissioners, Avenue Home and Preservation Staff. This application is for work at three different buildings at thirty-three, fifty-five, fifty-seven, west seventieth street. Looked in on the north side of west seventieth street, which is in Central Park West, they call this Avenue. And the upper west side, Central Park West Historic District. There are two aspects to this proposal and here are three, fifty-five, fifty-seven. So the first is to replace this brick plating at the base with a brown finished stucco spore plating. And the second is to expand the area length to align with this neighbor here, United sixty-one west and install a stucco clad brick wall and carpet for the future.
The applicant is here to discuss the proposal detail. Rick, is there anything you'd like to add?
No, sorry, would you like to thank the shareholders for helping bring this up?
Are there any questions? Okay, Actored, could you just explain the scoring and the stucco and exactly what you're writing?
In nineteen fifty-nine, a operation of these buildings removed the cornice work, the scoops, and a lot of the other architectural detail. But fortunately, this is a block that's very rich in this kind of brownstone material. And here in the upper left-hand corner, this is number twenty, number forty-two, west seventieth street. At the far right is number twenty, number twenty-two, west seventieth street. And what we can see is this rusticated base with these different panels, very clean cut around the masonry openings. And it is from these details that we drew the design that you see below for number fifty-three, fifty-five, and number fifty-seven, seventieth street.
Why did you have a wall proposed to be thirty-six inches wide?
It was done so to match what we found at the adjacent buildings.
This dirt that's three feet over there?
Yes.
It matches that, isn't it?
Yes.
Do you have a section for the details of the stucco, for example? You can now put something, the stucco work on the wall.
We've got a couple of testimony, we have more questions for that, Mark Diller.
Good morning, Chair and Commissioners, I'm Mark Diller. I'm the newly minted Chair of the Preservation Committee of Community Board seven, upper west side. There's nothing nefarious has happened to Jay Adolf, except that our bylaws turn limited him, so here I am. We are relieved to have an entire evening without a single rooftop addition or rear yard expansion. And so we recommend an approval of this. We find that the white glade brick is a surface that would make any facade less attractive. And so for that reason alone, we would recommend your approval of the application. The restoration of the cornice, which was before us, but I take it is now approved at staff level, is also a very welcome change in addition to this, as you've correctly noted, rich block. Without inviting the great to be the enemy of the good, there are missed opportunities here. One of which is the, the façades are dotted with these through-the-wall air conditioning louver vents that interrupt some of the historic fabric. And it is not part of the application before us or before you, and we find that to be a missed opportunity and quite unfortunate, because it really could complete the harmonization of these façades. Same with the use of windows, which I, before us, but again, appear not to be before you. And especially, there are windows that were, windows in Norway's that were infilled with a flat brick surface at one of the other points of the unfortunate modifications to these buildings pre-designation, that even the restoration of the transoms of which would harmonize the façades as well. So we find those things to be missed opportunities and unfortunately outside the scope. But on balance, our committee and our board agreed almost unanimously, the upper west side, we can't believe it. We, this is a worthy application and recommend your approval.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this application? We do have a letter from landlords west that the fashion closures do not permit historic precedent in areas that have a partial new wall, but never a thirty-three inch one. Block thirty-three, clip-on one, have been in the world for a hundred years. And talks about how the closures give coverage to firm and best. So approve of the side work, but not the fashion closures. Okay. Are there any other comments you'd like to go through the discussion? We have a motion to go through here, right? And the last words? Certainly is an improvement, a change of the white glade brick to a brass stone, to a stucco material that will relate to the brownstone bases on all of the adjacent buildings.
I agree, staff, a busy culture, the tops, the tops of the rustication, doors around the strength.
So I think we'll make a motion to support the application, recommend the legislation, they could do a little stat on those details.
In matter of LPC 19-27198, thirty-three, seventy-seven, seventy-eighth street, upper west side, Central Park West Historic District. Park, West historic district. Three Renaissance Roadhouse designed by Charles Beukin Company and built in 1890 and altered in 1910 by Frank S. Lincoln. Application is towards the building's base and area. I know that the building's style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and store factor of the Upper East Side of Central Park West historic district. I recommend approval for modifications. I think that the work will not eliminate or conceal any significant architectural features, but the groundstone colored spord stucco plating will be keeping with the treatment of bases found in other buildings of this age and style in this historic district. That the expansion of the area light to the one neighboring area light will be consistent in the lighting of area light installations found throughout the streetscape and historic district. That the proposed combination crash enclosure planter with low simple metal fencing will be keeping with modern installations of areaways throughout the streetscape and fencing materials, sizes, finishes, and basic design, and that the simple design of the wall and fence will help to identify the installation as a modern installation while also helping it to remain secondary present and relevant to the buildings in the streetscape.
Hello? I'm sorry.
We're confined in the declassified portions of the lifting of the banding and the locked part insulation around the entrances of eight typical treatments of the basis of buildings for the streetscape and removed. Therefore, it's demanded the application of other details of the rest of the banding and incorporate molding models to create standard dimensions of the planter and staff.
All in favor? Aye. Who's with that one?
Thank you. Okay, next up is item number five. This is LPC 19-3378, not an application for a certificate of appropriateness in Borough Manhattan, block 1384, block 75, 828 Madison Avenue, Upper East Side, historic district. Neo Renaissance style apartment designed by George Todd, built in 1925, 1936. Application is to modify marquee and install light.
Good morning, Commissioners, and�owers and Preservation Staff. Application before you is a proposal for the modification of the marquee, installation of lights, and replacement of wall sconces for Madison Avenue elevation of the 28 to 85 Madison Avenue, also in the West Side Hotel, located between 69th and 70th Street and Upper East Side of historic district. The proposed design includes the modification of Madison Avenue marquee by cutting it back in the street approximately two and a half feet. Marquee will reuse ornamental facial panel and match the existing marquee in terms of detailed finish, except the glass curve will be textured instead of texture glass instead of clear. The applicant is also proposing to install linear uplights at the stone piers and above the awnings within each new storefront bay of the ground and second floors. The fixtures will align with the base of the piers and the tops of the awnings will be installed with box finishes to match the bases and awning red color. They also propose to replace the existing wall sconces with a larger sconce between bays centered on storefront piers and features slightly different design. Commissioners should also note that the marquee was added to the building circa 1937 along with the second marquee of the 69th Street facade, which is similar but does not match this marquee in design. The scalloped ornamentation was added to the top of the marquee between 1940 and 1971. The architect Maxwell Powell, buyer of the cell, was interested in the historic floor.
Good morning. So as Cheryl mentioned, attached to Mark's proposal, so I'll talk about the marquee first of all. So on the top three images, this is the marquee on Madison Avenue, and on the bottom we just reference purposes, this is the existing marquee on 69th Street. I'm not touching that marquee, it's not about this marquee, but wanted to give you a sense of the two marquees. This is the condition of the marquee, actually, the last fall of the photo, so that you can see that there's extensive damage on the corners of the street. This is, or as we're told, due to truck conflicts, right, so delivery trucks along Madison Avenue. What really kind of concerned us was it wasn't just damage on the apron, but also damage on the marquee itself, which is not only a structural, sort of a pedestrian hazard, but also potentially a structural hazard because the marquee is connected back to the building. So, you know, we were of course curious, well, how does this actually happen? So, you know, this is a standard truck that you would find on Madison Avenue. They range from 11 foot six in height up to 13 and a half feet in height. So most of the trucks are really at the height of the apron, but there are some trucks a little taller. So we did a helpful movement, so this is just a standard sort of back-in movement. You can see in red the conflict, and you can see with the existing marquee, which is really right on the curb line as it was built. Much simpler movement, movement is just a truck pulling out, and even just doing that, the back of the truck nicks the need for marquee. So this is a real concern in that respect. Just also in terms of New York City Building Code, it actually does not focus, it focuses about how marquees have to be taken back, but now we know why that is the reason. We did a couple of, we did some analysis sort of historically. The original drawing actually did not have a marquee on Madison Avenue. Original rendering also didn't show it, they did actually have the marquee on 69th Street. So 12 years later, 11 years later, in 1937, there was a proposal to put in a marquee on Madison Avenue. It's a little different than what's there today. It's a much simpler design, it's sort of a plainer facial, the module of the skirting is actually a little bit smaller as well. But what's interesting is it had an integral lighting detail along the perimeter, so it wasn't just sort of a piece of glass that was floating around berman, it's actually that box did at the time. So the tax code is from 1940, kind of illustrates that, it looks like that's what was built. By the time, it was 1971, and the movie front connection changed a little, right? So additional ornamentation was added at the top of the marquee as well as along the fascia, you can see all this, and it's really kind of what you see today. But also, I think that lighting, the integral lighting was removed, you can see that all it is right now is just the glass skirting in 1971. And by 1981, at time of designation, it changed again, it looks like the skirting was modified and actually even pushed back, and then this is what we see today. So the marquee was not original, and it's been modified at least three times over the history of this building. The other thing to note is the skirting day is actually around plexiglass, it's not glass anymore. So as we mentioned, the intent is to actually cut back the marquee to 2 foot 6, which equates to two modules of the ornamentation. And what we wanted to do was keep the same essence in the architecture of the marquee and that, right? So really, from a frontal view, it's not going to change. If you go to the section, you can see we took off two bays in front, and that's how we're establishing the 30 inches, keeps us safely behind the curb. And then the other aspect that we're proposing is to introduce a more decorative light. So the light that's there now is an opaque, basically uplight that just shines light down, and this fixture here will have a little bit of a sort of a sparkle to it, it'll have a textured glass encasement, so that you can actually see a little bit of light behind the apron, which is sort of the tent. Again, just before, this is what is there today and what the intent would be after the removal of the 30 inches. And again, I think sort of from a pedestrian experience, nobody is really walking on the outer two feet of the sidewalk, and I think the experience of you walking on the marquee is still preserved with this, while you're really kind of applying this issue permanently. This is the strategy for how we would salvage the pieces, we would essentially salvage all of the decorative elements on the front face here, and basically push it back and pull it back so that we can reuse the whole front fascia and then the whole elements. So then in terms of lighting, the intent here is to light up the first two floors, which is retail in this building, along Madison Avenue and on the side streets, and the intent is to have a sort of nice soft lighting, illuminate, a really terrific architectural features that we actually see on the second, third floor of the building. So there are four elements here, the first one we spoke about, which is the lighting underneath the marquee. The other three are the lighting that we'll be putting on the second floor points, so the intent here is to use these very low-profile fixtures, which is right here, they're only about two inches tall, and we would shield them with a metal shield that would get painted out to match the limestone. And then in addition to that, we're proposing to add lighting right on sort of the connection point of the awning, the very top of the awning, to light the top of the storefronts and also to light the arches up here, which I thought was really tax-credible. And then the third piece was the lighting on the sconces. So we did a mock-up to see how this would look and how visible these elements would be. So these here are the shields, if you've seen, lighting up the piers, these are only occurring at the piers. And then up here are the fixtures on top of the awning. So the fixtures on top of the awning will also have a shield, and it will be clad in the same effect of the awning, so that it kind of disappears. And then in terms of, in terms of the existing sconces on the piers, this is not originally built, it was added sometime after 1981. What was sort of a little bit troubling when we started looking at this was that the fixture appealed a little bit out of scale, it seemed a little too small, but it was also sort of popping up above the line of the head of the windows, so we wanted to come up with a huge fixture that would be a little bit more decorative, but also sort of fit a little bit more in keeping. So what we're doing is we're finding a picture that's a little bit taller, and we're centering above the two modules up here, using the same gate box, and I think that works a little bit better, it's a descent along the transom as well, and also sort of playing on a little bit of the angularity of the different features. So that's our proposal, a little bit.
Thank you. Are there any questions? We'll go to public testimony. Sarah Katalata.
Good morning, Chair and Commissioners, Sarah Katalata, Department of Land and Public Service, Upper East Side historic district. Lighting, if the rendering serves as an accurate representation, nicely highlights the ornaments on the first brick floors of the building. We worry somewhat that the lighting could be excessive overnight, but we trust that the building management, retail tenants, and residents will consistently monitor the level of illumination and make adjustments as necessary. While the applicant is thoroughly logical and scientific in seeking a solution to remedy the continual damage to the marquee on the Madison Avenue facade, the proposed design short-changes this feature on a contributing building in the Upper East Side historic district. Truncating the depth of the marquee would resolve in much broader proportions, thereby diminishing the visual impact of the feature and reducing the effectiveness of its intended purpose to protect the entry from the elements. Friends, Preservation Committee feels strongly that this is an operational issue, not an architectural one. The building owner ought to solve with the issue of truck damage or parking regulation in front of the marquee, as opposed to turning to a design intervention with the first attempt to solve the problem. Just as we are disappointed with trucks backing into our street, we've been killing them, we don't want them backing into our marquees and forcing us to can't mutate them. We urge the commission to deny its application and for the applicants to further study ways to discourage truck parking in front of the one single affected bay on Madison Avenue before committing to permanently altering significant historic feature. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to speak on this application? We do have a resolution from Community Board to recommend the application presented. Would you like to respond to any of those comments?
Sure. I mean, I think we did, I mean, this is obviously a very expensive proposition to debate this train, not just for people, but also architecture. So we did investigate other options, but the traffic came here, and essentially the only other option really is to put ballast in the street, which is a nonstarter, we do a team on Madison Avenue, ballast on sidewalks and do anything, unfortunately. So, you know, really, the only solution to this ongoing problem since the marquee was really obstructed is to make a modification. The proposal, we believe, keeps the intent in sort of the architectural language, and we think it will protect the building rather than what's happening.
Any last questions? Motion to go through the hearing. Sarah Katalata? Aye. Discussion?
I spend a decent amount of time in this area. There are a lot of trucks, and they fill in an hour a day, and some of them just stay there. So it's work really done, it's like startled to see how many there are. I really, this is a very interesting marquee, and I really appreciate the sensitivity and thoughtfulness that you've taken to modify it. I feel like the proportions work, it's not going to track at all from the facade of the building. The lighting is also very sensitive, and I think will highlight the architecture, but really a wonderful addition to the landscape and the children's quality. And the panel lights themselves were very interesting.
Great, good, Diana?
I agree with Christine, I think it's a nice proposal, it's restrained, it's respectful, but in a way, attention to itself in a positive way, I don't think it's over the wrong term. And I think the marquee is necessary.
I agree with, and I am, I look this block, I leave here probably over this afternoon to go home on the bus, and there are tons of buses in progress on Madison, and I wonder why this doesn't get eaten up more. But the rule has been two and a half feet from the curb, for a long time, and 30 could be, so I could say that hopefully nobody would get hurt beside it, people with the trucks, somebody could get hurt in their knees, so I agree with those people that it's neither.
What a good presentation, off the lighting.
So I think if everyone agrees, we can move on to the next question.
In the matter of this certificate of appropriateness, Borough Manhattan, LPC 19-33789, 828 Madison Avenue, Upper East Side historic district, a neo-renaissance style apartment building designed by the New York City Company and built in 1910, designed in 1967, application is to modify it, marquee and install lighting. I know that the building's style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Upper East Side historic district. A further note, the marquee has been and continues to be damaged by vehicular traffic due to its closeness proximity to the curb line of Madison Avenue. I recommend approval finding that only a limited portion of the marquee will be removed and all replacement units will be salvaged from the marquee or will match the historic components in terms of materials and details and finish, that the marquee will remain whilst given to the engine and building, that the modifications to the marquee will maintain unified patterns of the decorative site panels and coffers. That the uplights will be simply designed small in size, managed to blend with their context and can install at 20 minutes per hour, with that facel at the piers and tops of the awnings by the most discreet locations for uplights at this facade, which features limited projecting elements to help conceal such risks of textures and conflict from view. That the placement of the uplights above the awnings and in alignment with the awning widths will help to minimize the visibility of the uplights from public thoroughfares and be consistent with the uniformity of this highly ordered facade, thereby helping them to remain in discreet presence, and that the proposed wall sconces at the piers will replace existing wall sconces and will be compatible with the type and style of the building in terms of their scale, materials, and finish.
Second? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed, thank you.
Right, moving on to item number six, this is LPC 19-22895, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in Borough of Staten Island, block 517, block 55, 283 St. Paul's Avenue, the St. Paul's Avenue staple in the Heights historic district, neo-floated style pre-standing house designed by Charles B. Tuohy and built in 1936. Application is to legalize the replacement of windows, install downwinds.
Good morning, Commissioners, Department of Land and Public Service, the item before you is to eat free St. Paul's Avenue located on St. Paul's Avenue between Beach Street and Taxer Place and the St. Paul's Avenue staple in the Heights historic district. This application is to legalize the replacement of select windows, which were installed without planar to the rear of the house. The historic windows were a mix of wood 1/1 and multi-light 1/1, which you can see on the left, and five windows were replaced with vinyl 1/1 at the front facade and two at the rear at the third floor. And here are some detailed photos of the vinyl replacement windows, and this is what that real headlight of the facade looks like, sort of looks like at the front, rear of the third floor. And I turn it over to the homeowners to answer and do your questions.
Okay, so the diamond pane sash at the third floor on the front and back?
Yes.
And at the second floor and third floor, it's the sash is the third place with all the wood casing remains around the third floor.
Yep. Yep.
Lawrence.
Yes, thank you. Oh, my name is Serena Woodington, I'm a professor. So, we're here to legalize the windows that Lindsay explained that goes there. We inherited this violation, this was done prior to us obtaining the house. We've been trying for a year now to try and legalize or find the replacement windows and unfortunately haven't been successful. So, that's why we're here today, trying to legalize what's currently there. As you can see, this is the street that we live in, so the blue house going that way is, I guess we're in the middle, so that's the whole view of St. Paul's. That's from Taxider Place going to Seabrook, I guess, right? So these are the houses, if you see the white house, the second to the two seventy-nine is the only house that currently has the windows with the special pattern on the attic, those are, that's the only house on the block that has it.
And that house.
Yeah, it's the one in vinyl siding.
Yeah.
And then, those are the other three houses on the block. So the only house that has that pattern is that white, yeah, which is right there closer to the picture. Obviously, we got that one's ours.
So there are actually two houses on the street that don't have, that have a different window pattern altogether. Three oh one has three windows and the one right next to us, two eighty-one, has a totally different feature, I don't know if that's historical, that was done later on down, but and every other house except for that gray one has basic replacement windows as well.
And then this is the back, again going in the same direction. These are windows that we have proposed, but unfortunately have not approved. And then that's just an old picture that we found, historical picture that, so obviously even like that, there was a door there, a central window at one point. So.
Do you have any questions? We'll just have Corey clarify the comments.
My understanding of the situation is that the applicant had been working with staff towards a solution for installing the wood windows to match the historic at that attic floor on the top. However, some of the details and other information that are required for staff to make those approvals hadn't been submitted yet. Certainly something that we work with owners on a regular basis and it could very well lead to that situation, but it hasn't been there yet, so the owners decided to just try to legalize what they had at this time. At this one point of clarification, the windows at the rear, the attic floor of the rear facade also had the starburst pattern, and those are before you only because they are mentally visible from various parts, points around the lot. If they weren't visible, staff would be able to approve those, but they're not for one staff document.
Question, Diana? Those details of the windows on the picture of T have been reviewed by staff and found not to be acceptable or not reviewed by staff yet.
Staff has seen those windows, generally what staff has also looked for is that the proposed windows are shown in the context of the wall they're being installed within, not just sort of floating details about the specifics of how they might be placed within the wall, just depth and how it interacts with the casing, I think that's the intention of that.
So it was missing information. Any other questions? We'll, how about the motion to close the hearing, just have our discussion.
Senator.
Senator Katala. I am. So, I think the starburst pattern, the possibilities, yes?
Oh, yeah.
I'm sorry, yes. I didn't, I'm just very, very sorry.
Oh, no.
It's open up the hearing, I guess.
Of course, we did, we understand from the boards that they inherited this commission by the homeowners, best of all. The city falls out through Stapleton Heights historic district, designated for its charming natural residential architecture in the nineteenth and early twentieth centuries, and the windows of these houses are an important component of this very special character. The replacement of the windows on this house should have been an opportunity to restore the original character of this house. In this row, Charles B. appeared to find buildings from the nineteen tens. It would have been wonderful to see the special windows restored at the historic story and new wooden sashes restored throughout the rest of the historic facade. Mr. Katala, this is legal work, further raises the appearance of the purpose of this house. Please work for the applicant to find an equitable solution that, even if it does not reach the restoration of houses' historic windows, at least it can make the landmark really worse.
Yes, yes. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this application? Okay, great, and we do actually also have a resolution from Staten Island Community Board number one recommending approval of this. The motion to close the hearing.
Senator Katala. I am. So, I mean, I think that the starburst pattern is, you know, the original configuration model, it's not there, it does exist elsewhere at the row, if that configuration should be returned at least to the firm. On the second floor, the windows were restored, they were one-over-one, and commission has approved alternate materials for the sash if the woodwork holder with casing remains. So I would just think about that as you think about the appropriations and these sashes and whether in this particular instance that they are not the appropriate, okay? Yes, Diana?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask you a question, just general, because John is here, he might know. Does the, does the staff have any idea, obviously most of them had porches originally, when the porches were remodeled? Here it is, I'm just curious.
Yeah, prior to designation, I think some of them are in the tax photo, so, yeah, they're not thirty, so here.
Any thoughts on all of the windows or any particular windows? And?
Well, it seems they found manufacturers who would make this window, making that they could work with staff in terms of placement, maybe the class correct, but they should receive a comment. I mean, I think ideally they would replace that as well. I think the appearance is similar, so.
Okay. All right, so I think that, make that motion, Diana? Diana, sorry.
In the matter of two eighty, two eighty-three, St. Paul's Avenue, St. Paul's Avenue in Stapleton Heights historic district. Application is to legalize the replacement of windows without landmarks, recommendation of mission purpose. I note that the building's style, scale, materials, details, and other features that indicate the special architectural and historic character of the St. Paul's Stapleton Heights historic district. I recommend approval for modifications, finding that the one-over-one double-door windows at the second floor of the front facade match the historic operation, configuration, and finish. That the windows are set within a more prominent historic wood casing with a more white painted finish and due to the minimal surface area of the wood finish and in the sashes, the change in material is minimally susceptible.
At the second, at the third.
And that although the one-over-one configuration of the windows at the third floor of the rear facade do not match the historic multi-light configuration at these locations, the windows are only visible at a distance or from a complete angle and are seen in context of numerous one-over-one double-door windows on the original building. And the one-over-one configuration at the third floor of the windows, however, that the one-over-one configuration at the third floor windows of the front facade does not match the multi-light historic configuration of the original windows that were exposed without LPC coverage. Therefore, I recommend that the windows at the third floor at the front facade be replaced to match the historic windows in terms of material configuration, operations, and details and finish.
Senator Katala, I am opposed. We need to move to that. Staff will work for the addition later.
Okay, so that's a question?
The staff will talk to you outside, thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move to the last two items of the day, these are publicly meeting items. First is item number one, LPC one nine dash two-nine three-three-nine, application for a certificate of appropriateness to Row Manhattan, block three oh block, three eighty-eight Industry Street, my public historic district. Row House, West Avenue, eighty-eighty-nine, application to construct a rear addition, which was last presented at the public hearing, decided in two thousand and eleven, no action to take.
Good morning, Commissioners, Michelle Graham, Preservation Staff, for the application. This is for work in three eighty-eight Industry Street, located on the west side, ten lights street between Warren, Boston Street, and Madison Avenue. This item was last presented at a public hearing November twenty-seven, twenty eighteen. Proposal at that time was to use a two-story rear addition featuring stucco cladding and装饰 metal dentation and metal wares. Here are the existing conditions of property seen on the right, from the facade, as well as the geese and our houses in the nineteen eighties and nineteen forties tax photos. It's a contrast of the existing block plan and the existing and proposed site plans. It's a little dark, we can see everyone's variation here. This slide shows the existing and proposed renovations currently. At the public hearing, most of the commissioners present expressed consensus of support for an addition of this size, which is visible to public perioles, as well as the use of a stucco finish due to the current coded state, sorry, coded condition of the rear facade, which can be seen in this picture on the map. However, the commissioners present also expressed concern about other aspects of the building. I'm gonna take you through those concerns and how the applicant has revised their proposal to address those. Some commissioners present expressed concerns about the design of the addition and suggested that the applicant explore and study more evocative restoring key porches found at the rear buildings in this historic district. In response to this, the applicant has looked at examples of historic porches and redesigned the proposal to feature wood cladding seen here in last, that the rear portion of the addition, the side will remain as stucco clad, masonry, match the original building. In addition, some commissioners had concerns about the extent of the glazing in the original proposal. In response to this concern, the applicant reduced the amount of glazing present and changed the dentation to a more traditional multi-light configuration seen on the left. And next, I'll just take you through several slides showing additional details of the proposed addition, this is the existing section. So the overall dimensions of the proposed addition have not changed, we'll review the Lastly, these slides show the existing conditions of the block as seen from Warren Street as well as the previously constructed block up here, and then revised rendering showing the updated proposal. The applicant is here, do you have any questions about the changes to this addition? Thanks, Michelle.
Are there any questions? Can you make a little bit of? Thoughts? Yes, Rick?
I don't have a whole list. I would say that maybe it's open, I think it's actually a very elegant solution.
I would just add that if the applicant wanted to, I think everyone could add additional glazing to the left and right of the doors. I know, I think, you know, the style and the format now is kind of appropriate, I think, and I don't think it would suffer at all if they wanted to do that with staff's assistance.
Regarding three eighty-eight Industry Street, public historic district, applications to discuss the rear addition, building's style, scale, materials, and health around the construction, special architectural, historic, and historic district. I recommend approval for modifications, finding work or not, alter illuminators, experience with materials, features, and additional on rise on the built-out of the building or substantial make-up of the yard. And therefore, when our one building emerges in this plus, we can space the bulk of the proposed addition from the south of Warren Street. The two-story higher the addition will maintain residential scale of the block and maintain the true physicality of the road. Design, its reality, the proposed addition, painting, some additional stucco, deciding multi-light windows to become a sort of building, the tall store, the porches found throughout the district, I also recommend the applicant, if they're with staff, to add more glazing and find the force in the details, type more of the addition.
Senator Katala. I am.
Okay, and last, two ninety of the day, item number two, LPC one nine dash two-three-point-five-nine, an application for a certificate of appropriateness to Row Manhattan, block twelve-nine, block ten, five-thirty Madison Avenue, eighteen eighteen, that quarter's building, later so Plaza now, left of Madison Avenue, individual landmark, modern style skyscraper designed by Philip Johnson, John Burkey, built in nineteen seventy-seven, seventy-eight. The application is to demolish the entry in the main exit building, construct a new public plaza, saw storefronted building, limited signage, construct and modify it into a new world. This was presented at a public hearing of January fifteen, two thousand and nineteen, however, there was no discussion and no action.
If you recall, last time we had a very formal presentation and a testimony, and we were late hour eight A and some witnesses, and the president, the juror, and the applicant to the testimony, which gave our comments, asked her having thought about the testimony and reviewing the handouts, documents, and what you found.
Quickly, good afternoon, Commissioners, Green Initiative Preservation Staff. Application before you is five fifty Madison Avenue, a modern style skyscraper designed by Philip Johnson and John Burkey, and it's located on Madison Avenue between East Fifty-Six and East Fifty-Five. Application was first presented at a public hearing on January fifteen, two thousand and nineteen, where the commissioners took no action as there was no court. Applicants are back to recap the proposal for the commissioners as well as respond to public ownership team and some other architects.
Hi, everybody, this is Eric Corvada, I'm the PM of the AM Group, there's our development partners, RSR and Schelsfield. Just very briefly, since we did speak last time, just want to say we're thrilled to be back. We were very excited to get overwhelming support that was, you know, public testimony as much as we spoke. In particular, for me, I thought it was a very unique thing to have the architect that built the building actually have thorough support. I think it goes to show how much we've done and everything we've done as far as our thinking to that. In addition, you know, this community board, Fasching, demanding support, both from the subcommittee level and the board, to the young brewer and the general president is very meaningful to us. And the last thing I'd say is just from our standpoint, we realized that we had a design that we had to rethink, we saw how much passion there was for the building, we took that very seriously, and to have people like Robert Stern, who was originally in opposition with the direction we were going, to publicly speak, how supportive and how good he felt that we've done, was meaningful to us and we hold it to you as well. So with that, I don't want to take too much airtime, but I wanted to just introduce Nick Anderson from Sohata, to walk you through a brief summary of what we did last.
Thanks so much, we're glad to be back, and as Karina mentioned, this will be a recap of the slides that you've seen previously, so I'll try to move a little more quickly. so I'll try to move a little more quickly. And we're hoping that for those who haven't seen this before, feel free to interrupt or ask questions, or obviously we'll have questions at the end as well. I think our hope at the outset, it's not that I'm more architects and landscape architects, is that the tower continue to live on. And in its most basic essence, our strategy from a number of years ago has evolved to be one of a preservation project for the tower, and of minor updates and adjustments to the ground level podium and building at the rear, in order to make this building successful at the ground, as well as at the top. So we're proposing no major changes to the upper portion of the tower, including the crown and the office levels. And today, we're going to focus mostly on the podium level, so below the office floors, the public spaces, and landscape at the back of the project. And as you may know, those spaces have been challenging over the years in terms of their relationship to the urban fabric, in terms of the relationship of the covered pedestrian space to the public and retail areas to the public. So a big piece of what we're doing is taking a heart look at some of those changes that were made in the early 1990s, a few years after the building was built, and trying to improve those relative to achieving transparency at the base, and then improving the public connection to them at the covered pedestrian space and landscape at the rear. So we summarize our four goals, to preserve and revitalize the landmark tower in stone and openings, to restore the original self-designed intent, which has to do with providing public amenity in addition to creating a landmark office tower. The original hypo-style hall on the ground floor, its intent was to provide that back to public space, and we feel that through some strategic interventions, we're able to meet that intent and bring that viability back to the ground level once again. As I mentioned, the multiple alterations of the base in the 1990s, many of those we feel like were problematic, and not in keeping with the original intent of the building. And our hope is to improve those, and I'll walk you through that today. And then to increase and eliten the public space at the back in the form of a garden, and consolidate the public space in the rear to provide a true public amenity that's open and clear for neighborhood. You'll remember, in its original configurations, this is a ground floor plan, that this hypo-style hall, as Philip Johnson called it, was completely open from Madison Avenue and allowed access and cyclones through, regarding the rear. It also allowed clear access from 55th and 56th Street. There was no retail on Madison Avenue, but those kiosks you see clustered around the rear elevator four were the compromise for including retail, but keeping it toward the back. That ultimately proved problematic, that retail did not succeed. The public space in the back did not succeed, and within a few short years, in the early 90s, that space was altered and renovated, and the configuration is here, so the blue lines represent change. Retail was enclosed at Madison Avenue, and that was in agreement with the city. The city understood that it was a mistake to not have retail at Madison Avenue, so it was brought forward. Some vestiges of that former hypo-style hall in the form of these narrow arcades at the side are what remained from that open space, and proved to be relatively problematic themselves, and we'll talk a little bit more about that in depth. But you'll also note that the covered pedestrian space in the rear, which was originally open, is now enclosed and conditioned. The kiosks in the original form were removed, and the annex building at the top of the screen was also highly altered. So these arcade spaces, you'll see a photograph on the left of sort of how dark those were. Philip Johnson actually conceded that the area of the base wasn't used and became called in unfriendly, and that was a cue to us that in order to improve that, we need to think about changes to the configuration of retail along Madison Avenue. And in this image, which is a professional photo taken at the time, you'll see kiosks and landscape put in there in five years of building opening, as an effort to activate that space. And it may not be obvious, but there's professional floodlighting put in on the left in order to be able to see this space very late on. The covered pedestrian space in the rear has gone through many durations. Original on the left, with an opening on both ends to 55th and 56th, center with those large lampos which came, or hanging lights which came in, the kiosk that we decided did. And then today, on the right, that space with boarded up windows or filmed windows on the right, catwalks and camphol, clouting and producing the available daylight at the top. And in general, there's the retail and area of the base not embodying to the vibrant qualities of the original intent. So our hope is to help improve that public space, to bring transparency to the ground floor level, to, and doing that by removing some of the windows at the base that were changed in 1992, and to restore that sense of openness and clarity that the public space in the rear is in fact a public space, not a private space. When you look at a before and after of the whole tower, the change is fairly subtle. And you can see, if you look closely at the glazing on the base, that there are some changes to that. But just in terms of the overall impact of the Madison Avenue facade, it's very subtle. The more substantial impact would be at the rear of the site, along with the annex, the public space, and then replacing the glazing with an existing standard, except for the challenge of the towers. So originally on the left, in the 1990s, the blue glazing was what was changed, and in terms of our proposal, replace with more clear glazing in those openings that have already been changed, and then to convert one of the closed openings toward the CPS side to the west, from a closed condition to an open condition, much more like the original open hypo-style hall of the original configuration. So this is the essential condition that you've got today. We're proposing to keep the quick glazing and mullions in the center bay and circular window, and to replace the intensive glazing and bay windows of the flat arches to either side with much more clear glazing, which will allow visibility through the retail and then through the center bay. In our proposal here, hint through to the garden and the rear, to give you a cue from Madison Avenue that there is a public space in the back, much in the same way that the hypo-style hall was open from Madison to that space in the original configuration. You'll see a signage van, which we'll talk a little bit more about, that's part of the signage master plan. The materials of the mullions will be very similar to the bronze material that's there in the center arch. And again, the center arch and circular window mullions will remain and are existing. They need to be cleaned as they've been painted. Our proposal is to remove that paint and restore them back to their original bronze finish, and then for our other mullions, for new openings, to be matching their original material. You'll see here in a bleak view, currently the retail is entered through that smaller side arch, which confuses the entry circulation path for the commercial and retail tenants. Our proposal is to locate entries along Madison Avenue at the perimeter, which we feel will be better for both potential retailer and for legibility into the public, in terms of how it enters those retail spaces. So existing condition, or sorry, original condition on the left, when that was all an open hypo-style hall. In the center, your current condition, with the ground floor, retail base popping out. And at the far right, our proposed condition, and you can see the plan in the bottom row, with our glazing a full five feet back to the back of the columns, so that the language of the stone and the flat arch is emphasized and bring the stone, not the glass, in terms of the bleak view walking up and down Madison Avenue. So compared to photo collage, original on the left, current in the center, and you'll note the ventilation grills and circular porthole openings, which we propose switching out for clear glass, once we're able to take the mechanical out of those spaces. And then the retail that comes out to the back of the columns at the street face, allowing people to see in and put the retail to have a good presence on the street. As the building is currently empty, and has been for a couple of years, our goal is for this building to be full and for it to contain roughly 3,000 people. The building was originally designed for 800 people, and that necessitates changes to how the elevators work. It also necessitates change in terms of the amenity levels, which are between the tower and the podium levels, for how that space is imagined. When we thought about how to enliven those spaces, which will be the core of the sort of informal energy of the building, they need to have daylight. Currently, there are small windows on the north and south, but there are no windows along the long face of Madison Avenue or the west side. Our original proposal a couple of years ago proposed putting windows on Madison Avenue, bringing light in that way. We've reconsidered that, and based on an understanding of how Philip Johnson and his firm originally thought about locating openings at that level, also in conjunction with the landmarks report identifying the hierarchy of the façades in terms of Madison Avenue and the side streets being of sort of high precedence, we felt that the west side of the building at that podium was an appropriate place for us to locate new openings in order to bring daylight into those amenity levels. So that's what you see here on the right, green are the proposed new windows along the west face. You'll also note that the, that small arch window, at least on this image, which will allow a view through from Madison Avenue, and a view from the retail back into the tower itself. So just to quickly look through the west elevation, this is the original, you'll note the original ventilation grills there. The current condition was the enclosed atrium, the ducts and catwalks and glass façades at the side streets. In our proposed condition, those will be the new windows at the amenity levels above the new canopy and that arched window, which is very similar to the side arches of the retail today. So the next couple of slides will be section drawings and a new illustration relative to the last time we presented. It's a section drawing cut through the last bay in order to understand the relationship of the retail, proposed retail, the loggia space, which is this open area, underneath flat arches at the back, and the retail at the front. So the section cut is through here, looking toward 55th Street. So this is the original condition, the open hypo-style hall, looking through three open porthole windows, covered pedestrian space to the right, and then open to the base. In the 1990s, that was all enclosed with the glass facade facing 55th, and then because it was a conditioned space, they located the mechanical above what are now the two current small side arcades. So there are these two, what we call sort of saddlebags of space, full of mechanical equipment, that center space is also full of mechanical equipment. In our proposal, once the canopy and covered pedestrian space are made open air, that removes the need for that mechanical equipment to be there, we're able to remove that, open up that space on the interior to the retail, take the ventilation grills out, open up those three porthole windows with glass, or sorry, two of the porthole windows with glass that are in the retail on the left. And that third bay will be restored to the original hypo-style hall condition, including restoring the stone after the mechanical is removed, removing the glazing where it says open loggia there at the bottom, and the natural porthole window as it was in the original configuration. The detailing of the windows at the amenity levels will be consistent with other stone detailing in the buildings, including stone profiles as the windows on the north and south. And we're rearranging the entry and exit from the lobby to CPS, which is triggered by the change in elevator required for the more people into the building. Maintain public access as there is today between the lobby and the covered pedestrian space. The door is actually a couple of inches bigger, and that relationship will be maintained in the future as well. And then the new, what we call the porthole window, sorry, the garden window, picture window, looking from the lobby out to the rear, again with the same stone detailing corners as the current arch windows that it shares proportion. So in service of that clarity, you know, this is, this is the view that you'll see from Madison Avenue into the water feature beyond, with the original glazing intact and much clearer glazing after the retail on either side. When we look at this in total, in terms of the exterior surface area of the tower, we're maintaining 94% intact of the original surface area, and that 6% are the changes that I've explained to you today. So in terms of public space, switching to the back for a moment, scale-wise, the proposed garden, when we take all the public space, or propose to take all the public space, including the arcades, and combine it together, consolidate it in the rear, this will be a space of the scale of the Moana Sculpture Garden and of 767 Fifth and Open Plaza, in terms of GM building, and will provide a nice counterpart to the enclosed IBM pop space across the street. We're proposing that we return this to the open-air condition as it was originally, and feel that that would be the best amenity for the neighborhood and allow it to continue to be a vibrant space in the future. When we look at the consolidation of that public space, original on the left with that open ground floor, white is the interior enclosed in the current configuration center. In our proposed, on the right, we're consolidating that space in the rear and increase that public space to 21,000 square feet, which is even a little bit more than what we had originally. Enabling that, of course, will be the modification of the annex building and the removal of glazing along that third bay, to return that glass bay to the open hypo-style hall condition. So we're operating within the context both of Manhattan in terms of its density and energy and buildings, as well as within a natural context, and we want, we want to acknowledge that when we think about how, how the character of the landscape and open space should be determined. So within that framework, we've also looked at the landscape architecture of Philip Johnson and the many spaces around his various works. We found that there's a tendency to make outdoor rooms, there's a frequent use of water, there's a frequent use of concrete, precast, hard-sheathed materials, and those sort of low concrete walls that you see at the Thanksgiving Square and lower left. So we took some cues from that, and we've also noted a vast stylistic shift in Philip Johnson's work over time. And in terms of how that makes itself known within the building, we've taken some cues from the geometry of the building itself, that the round forms of the porthole window, the iconic Chippendale pavement at the top, and the main entry arch, those are the elements that provide relief, a sense of variety, from the fairly straightforward excursion of this office tower. And that use of the round geometry is pervasive throughout his other work, and we feel provides a good framework for how we lay out the foundation of the landscape in the back. So its plan is based on a framework of these circles, referring to that playful geometry in the tower, and bringing a sense of that play and life and asymmetry to the garden design in the back. So you see that on the left, a planned framework for those circles, and then the exterior forms, and the hill that rises up from the plaza itself to the building adjacent to the west, and the new canopy at the top. You'll note that there is a series of different scales of space in the garden itself, water feature, the ability to walk from 55th to 56th, the ability to see through, and a large proportion of the garden will be planted, providing a really nice breath of fresh air for those spaces.
Any questions?
Yes.
Can you walk on top of the landing beds?
No, and our feeling is that the hill, we looked at that originally and said, what would it take for us to get up to that hill? We, of course, want that to be accessible for everyone, and based on the slopes required, that the ramps and handrails required in order to get everyone up there took up a significant proportion of the area of that hill. So it was our feeling that the vegetation itself, even if you don't have to step on the garden, still provides a really great public kind of fit and surrounds you with vegetation, and that Central Park is, you know, five minutes walk away, being in nature and sort of being in that vegetation in a more correct way is what we need. Great, I will go more quickly. Rooms under that hill as well, the current condition at Madison Avenue, and in terms of the proposed, as you can really see that garden, and that the, the last bay is open, which is currently closed at night, a lot of great benefits, which we've already talked about, protecting garden, and we'll go through those, including robust planting, well-considered planted areas, two-tone paving, which will be granite, two-tone granite paving, which is similar to the pallet that's there today and will need to be replaced based on the grading required by the garden design. And then the canopy itself, in concert materially and in terms of color palette, with many of Philip Johnson's other canopies, doesn't quite reach the building's Philip Johnson's other canopies, doesn't quite reach the building to the west, but as you'll see in the top left, the gray is the current annex building. When we take part of that down, the canopy will then stretch out that public space and make a more generous place for people to go and have it, transforming from today's condition to a proposal of a similar like this. And there, you'll see again that last bay opened up to the original condition of the hyperstyle hall there. I'll just look through these quickly, that's proposed there from the 55th Street side. Sure, sure. So I'll wrap up just by saying, in terms of the retail area, you know, we've looked at how the retail and Madison Avenue interact, and we feel that it's important that the retail stay at the Madison Avenue front edge. There are a lot of reasons why that, we feel that's important. Moving the retail back, we feel like will compromise that retail expression, it will mean that the space, like the current arcade space, will remain unactivated, and that the best and highest use of that public space is for it to be consolidated in the rear with the two bays open and restored to the original hyperstyle hall condition that we are able to make happen at that time here. So I'll just flip through these quickly and there.
Okay, so just to recap on the public testimony, I know that, as you stated, there was a lot of support for this proposal, there were also some comments about, that I think most people recognize that Madison Avenue is a retail corridor, and that it is an existing condition, but there were some comments that asked if there would be some compromise with some opening, and in addition, I think there was another group that commented on the shape of the canopy and the color of the annex in the back, and those were largely the comments. So I think your response to the compromise about opening this one up, you said, while you aren't listening to two little low-end bays, you're opening and restoring the entire back portion to its original hyperstyle. And if I'm not mistaken, I think you said that you actually are restoring more double-height open space under the footprint of the building and certainly there today, and even though the two sides are waiting in. And I think your response to the shape of the canopy has viewed it as circular art features. The comments that were made in the testimony, sort of the response. Are there any questions for the applicant? Yes.
Sorry, I have a quick presentation. I have one question. The renderings seem to show that the retail, the retail spaces, you decided, the central window are quite recessed, you know, at the levels, they don't come to the window wall itself. Is that, can we rely on that? Is that, you know, we have control necessarily in the interior? But I think if we start seeing a second and a third floor spread right against the window, change the whole nature of that space, I'm just wondering, is that something that you can tell us here today will not occur?
Yeah, so how far back are those questions?
Sure, I understand as we mentioned, unusual retail space, which is why I asked the question.
Sure, so to answer your question simply, yes, we're willing to make sure that that remains in that condition, will exist in the future. So our proposal is to pull that mezzanine back to the face of the column, which is roughly 30 feet back from the outside of the building. And that's our proposal. But yeah, thank you. The mezzanine floor.
Thank you for asking that question, and that's your channel. How did you arrive at color or the canopy?
The color of the canopy is based on the color of the existing canopy, so our intent is to match the color of the existing steel on the canopy that they said is intended for the roof. We felt that the material palette was something that was part of the original intent of the building, and that the, while the spatial configuration of the canopy has widened in order to increase daylight into the space below, we felt that the original color palette was still appropriate in terms of its contrast and complement to the character of the stone of the building.
Yes, Diana?
Yeah, my question is also about the canopy. Well, this obviously is very light and airy. I'm just wondering if you consider trying to incorporate the porthole shape when you were, you know, designing the new canopy. So why included not to try to do that?
Sure, I'm just going to pause this slide trying to think.
So we looked at saving the original canopy in terms of its current configuration, and based on the fact that the columns would be coming dead center down the original space, that they are currently embraced by the annex building, and that it would create a dangerous condition in terms of snow and ice at the bottom of that variable if you removed the annex building, it was our strong feeling that a canopy replacement would be more appropriate and better for the public. In terms of the geometry itself, we do have a subtle cue to the round form of the original canopy and to the porthole windows. So you'll see the radius of the porthole window appearing at the top where the canopy posts join the horizontal ribs. It's a subtle cue that I think in our thinking still appropriates the building, and the fact that the structure is sort of as light as can be provides a nice complement to sort of hold solidity of the stone of the building.
Any other questions? And so just one last question, from the side, when you do fill in that the last porthole bay, the column that's formerly exterior, will that retain its granite class?
Referring to this column here?
Yeah, and the one inside.
And the one inside. Yes, so our proposal is that the stone that does remain, remains intact, and that our intent is to protect that stone in place, to allow retail tenant to non-destructively cover it if they desire with a finish, but that the stone that still exists on those columns inside the retail will remain.
You'd be able to look through the glass and see that?
Yeah, no, just depending on the finish that the retailer are covering. It says that, and you said correctly, that the tenant may choose to cover it with whatever material they work out. So it'll be there, it won't necessarily be able to see it.
Is that true also of the back of the column, the exterior columns? What's that would be interior face of the exterior columns?
You talking about these columns?
Yeah.
Yes, so that would be true. The putting in this glazing will necessitate the temporary removal of that stone, and it may be that, we do intend to put stone back on that, it may need some modifications based on how the anchoring detail works, but that would be the same condition. In other words, the stone will be stone placed if the retailer chooses to non-destructively attach a finish to that that is on their interior space.
Yes, Mike.
I have a question quick. As a kind of big picture, what you're doing at the back is you're doing something very new, taking down the old structure and putting up something that is very, very consciously chosen on all these levels, pretty much, to be different from what was there before. Why, tell me a little bit about how you decided that this palette of materials was an appropriate choice in its relationship with the landmark building, the white stuff of the white metal panels?
Sure, so when we look at the white metal panels, those, our hope was that the modified garage entrance, to take that particular example, would be in keeping with the garden space and the landscape space, rather than trying to ally a modified version of the annex building with the tower itself. And as we mentioned before, we're taking the cue for the materiality from the existing canopy steel and glass itself, so that metal panel will be the same color as the existing curb.
So does the remaining structure, let's break it off for a moment, the canopy itself, the garage enclosure, the some other space in there, front of the garage enclosure, elevator, back walls, stuff out, for you, that is meant to not relate to the existing building in any way, or to have some kind of relationship to the existing building in any way?
We feel like it provides a good complement to the building, and I think...
Explain that.
Sure. I think in our feeling, the original pink granite stone of the tower is the focus of the piece of the preservation, and that the proposed changes that we're making to the rear of the building, taking cue from that canopy space, they take a cue from the original kiosks, which are made of metal panels and glass, they take a cue from the facade of the annex building, which is glass and metal panel as well. So we're not introducing new materials, those materials were existing in the original configuration. The shapes of these materials are different, and that's based on the need to be an open, wide, public garden as opposed to a sort of narrow, dark, underused public space. But I think we've taken pains to take use from the existing materiality, both from this building and from other Philip Johnson works. I know I mentioned the precast, that's very prevalent in many of his outdoor spaces as well. Thank you.
Do you want to add anything? Okay. I'll spare everybody my admiration for this building, not always architectural exactly historically, it's crucially important in American history, whether you like the building or they like postmodernism, it doesn't matter, this building is a standard. And I will say also, and then I'll move on to my thoughts, I spend most weekends in Sunny Creek, Connecticut, where I have a house, and not so far away from the quarry, and we opened this quarry, which Philip Johnson did, by visiting it and saying, that's the granite I want. Well, basically, I'm part of that quarry, and I have hundreds of feet of rock wall made of Sunny Creek because it's there, it's under us all. So I have a great affection at different levels for the building, and I was enormously pleased that in my few months of interim chair, that the building was landmark during the period, and felt that it was like an honor for me to be here for that. Now, when I was understanding, and I'm sorry I missed the first presentation, but thank you for very comprehensive, well so that our chair wanted, presentation that was useful for me. When I was understanding the scheme and so forth, I kept saying to myself and maybe to others, why did they remove the bustles, as I call them, in the back? If they're going to recreate a cover, why not just use that cover? Otherwise, most of what was being proposed, I could accept, but I kept going back to this in my own mind, my own mind. Well, I've traveled that distance now too, and I have found your explanation, you know, today, just in studying the plans as well, very convincing. I also have to admit that having John Burdick, Robert A. Stern, and others, who had such a crucial part of the construction of this building and of that era, that their embrace of what's being done in the rear of the building to be something that I could also support. Having their support actually helped immeasurably, I think, my own view of it. I think what you're creating in the rear now, acknowledged initially by Johnson, soon after it was built, Charlie Rothem didn't improve things at all, even though he was trying to improve things. I think the failure of that space has been known and documented and felt, all you have to do is go there today and feel how terrible it is, frankly. And I think what's being proposed now today is a huge improvement, it's a modern touch, it's a more contemporary touch many years later, but it is, in my judgment, in keeping this building at this point, and I can now support all aspects of it. I did ask that question about the retail, I hope you don't have an impossible job on your hands renting that space, it's an unusual configuration for a retailer, but maybe the special kind of retail that deserves to be in this special place can be found. Anyway, from my point of view, I can certainly vote for it without any changes.
I also missed a couple of presentations, and thanks for bringing me up to date. I agree with a lot of Fred's comments. I have to say, having lived in New York my entire life and passed this building for so many years, I really felt the ground floor of the space to be not only inviting, but somewhat oppressive. And the same thing with the additional back. I mean, at one point, I just stopped going into the building, as many did. You know, the challenge is, has been a new one. I mean, this is a heavy building with a dark space, and as Fred said, one that Philip Johnson acknowledged didn't work that well. And the, so the idea of how do you open it up and maintain the integrity and really, and compliment it is a big deal. And I was a little concerned about the, you know, are you really going to be able, these retail tenants are already paying very high rents, are you really going to be able to make the retail work for them? Well, from this perspective, I think that it feels very open and porous and inviting. And also, when the building is reactivated with lots more tenants and employees, I think that will, you know, that will be free of the circulation, both the inside and from the outside. I really have to compliment you on the work that you did on the outdoor space. I think the replacement of the canopy is a wonderful accent to the building. It kind of got rid of the heaviness, it opens up the space tremendously, there is no really terrific public space in the area, and it's absolutely inviting, and I think the canopy's elegant, which is also wonderful, and I believe, again, so you increase the lightness at the base and you add to the ferocity... and you add to the porosity, which is very important, and I think it's going to help make not only the feel of this area terrific, but I think it's going to contribute to the success of the building. Thank you.
I have to admit that I wasn't entirely, or that I hesitated about whether or not it was time or necessary to designate this building as landmark. And that, once advanced and calendered, I wasn't convinced that the designation went all the way, that it included all of the necessary aspects of the building that needed to be protected. What I have been pretty clear about and convinced throughout though, is that the hyperstyle hall is the, is and was the most defining, critical aspect of this postmodern building that we designated because it was a postmodern, a quintessential postmodern building. So the hyperstyle hall is what I think is the issue. And, I mean, if postmodernism was about, you know, reappropriating classical motif, language, scale, and in a sense, doing that for the sake of drama, for the sake of form, for the sake of, you know, Ross's few years later, Architecture of the City, if that was the case, and also, of course, in resistance or in projection to modernism's abstraction, which is to say, you know, using these classical forms in order to make phenomenological space, space you could actually feel, then the hyperstyle hall was an incredible response, you know, and expression of that. So I think that this whole thing of saying that, you know, the hyperstyle hall is too high or too deep, and therefore too dark, is like saying that the Guggenheim Museum is too slanted, or that Grand Central is too cavernous and therefore noisy, or that the President Building is too pointy and likely a hazard one day. It's, it's, it's beside the point. If we go into the effort of actually landmarking, saying that it's worthy of designation, then the feature that's most defining, it seems to me, is most critical to, in some way, to retain, despite its sort of curateless qualities. Anyway, who said that postmodernism didn't have that darkness about it? I'm not so sure. So I just, I'm all confidence in the world, and it's clear that some architects can make a perfectly happy and, you know, in every other way, sustainable, open space, public space, and that they can fix retail, you know, the retail demanding, that, you know, the things that are necessary for retail function today. But that's not our project. We're not a design commission, we're not the planning commission, we're not a building department. We're here to protect, and to identify, and then to further protect the designations and regulations. So it's very confusing to me how we can jettison that proxy thing.
I mean, I guess one way to think about it is that the ground floor is already enclosed with retail, with a certain storefront assembly. And so could there be something that you might find appropriate that relieves the fact that it's been already turned into retail prior to designation? Think of it that way.
It's a tough act to follow. I'll be more on Bill Murray, Doctor Berth. I really appreciate what you said. I think, actually, to help preserve the reading of the hyperstyle hall, that we should protect the granite cladding, all the columns and all the surfaces. And I would advocate for pulling in the glass of this storefront, so that they don't, just don't touch, or just come right, you know, just sort of breeze by the granite, but to help at least maintain that original material and the original intent of that. Even though I agree that it was impressive space, I think it is worthy of keeping that original material. I think that the annex in the back, I don't know how carefully it was designed originally, and obviously, it's been a problem ever since. And I think that the replacement isn't much, is appropriate. Even that it maintains the original building, and is very subservient to original building. I think that the garage buildings, the stuff out of the color of the canopy are the very stark in comparison to the granite. And I think they actually, it calls more attention to them. And I think that a more subdued color would be more appropriate. But I think the form is appropriate.
I think that the changing in the glazing and the added penetration are improvements that I can support. And the public open space, as far as the overall design, is just terrific because there are so few open spaces maintained by buildings that are really appropriate open spaces, that really benefit the public, and have, many of them become, as this one has, so privatized as to not seem like a public space to anyone. So I think that the trust of it is very good. I think that, given what, the redesign of that space and the adjacent annexed building, to be much more subsidiary, it's that the, trying to preserve the barrel vault, I don't see how it can be usefully and appropriately done. So I think I can go along with the redesign of the canopy as well. I do think that the cladding of the garage building is not the right direction, because it calls attention to itself. But also, if you're within the space, the original sense was to have sort of the same type of cladding on both sides. And so I don't, I think changing your cladding, or changing the material for the garage is not an alter. It should be a material that relates back to the building, the original problem. So I think that's, those are my principal comments.
It was, this is one of my favorite buildings. I actually did a case study published on this architecture. And I do appreciate what's being done with the main building, and lightening up the glass in the building, and bringing out the retail, the retail was terrible. We couldn't get it through, we couldn't find the materials, and we forced to give it up. And I can understand the cladding. My biggest problem, though, is the public space, which I appreciate, is actually a great public space, but it doesn't seem to belong to this building. It's like it's two separate spaces, it's two different dialogues, two separate things. It's like, it's, I appreciate the design, yes, it's clearer, it's lighter, it's brighter, it's deeper there, but somehow, it doesn't seem like it's integrated into this building. It's just added one, I don't see how it's actually part of the building. I'm not sure if just changing the shape of the canopy to something that was more, you know, of a regular geometric shape of a curved semi-circle, or a quarter circle or anything, or changing the color. I think the shape and the color need to change, because it, nothing in the existing building links back to this old febrile, humid, white kind of scene of effect. And though I know if you're looking through the building and it's a garden, it still doesn't seem to be integrated somehow. And I think it would not seem at all integrated, except changing the cladding on that wall with the garage, with darker color, which is certainly not starkly white, it's certainly not so light. And the canopy itself is so light. I don't know if you're going to, you're going to be cleaning it all the time, because it's filthy in the earth after a few years. So I think, even if they took it to a bronze, not only got to the black and green colors, but it seems that it's, the color's way too white. It's just not, the materiality is just not the same, and the tones are not the same. It's no longer a postmodern building, it's becoming something else.
Interesting conversation. I had no problem, and I wholeheartedly voted for the appropriateness of this building being designated as landmark, for the exact same reasons that Fred articulated. And I have no problems at all about defending it as such from a historical view, it certainly was incredibly influential. And I remember very clearly the designated conversations. We had the testimony surrounding that. The testimony at the time anticipated consciously this moment that we're at right now, where the argument was made that the annexed building was an afterthought, was a concession to the planning, that it was imposed on the original architects, and that they did their best to do what they needed to do, but they didn't love it. That therefore, the annex should be excluded, or not excluded for landmark, but given a notation within the designation that it was less significant to the development of the architecture. I agree with that, even though its utility was transparent at the time. And I think that's fine. So I think that the removal of the annex on the wall is appropriate. But at that same time, I and others emphasized how important the hyperstyle hall was to the design. The problem is that while I agree with Arnie that it is the, one of the key aspects of the building, it's an interior today, it's an interior at the moment that was designated. And since we didn't designate that interior as an interior landmark, we can't touch it. So next trouble to me, because I think that, to the extent that the hyperstyle hall is a key element of the architecture, ninety percent, eighty percent of it, with the exception of the north and southmost bays, are not part of the landmark. It is controlled by the designation. I was also troubled, as Fred was, by the potentials for the interior retail development of the retail space. It's great that the applicant has said that they're going to preserve the stone. They're under no obligation to do so. The interior is not landmark.
True, but I think it could be, the CMA could be conditional on that.
Yeah, so just so we're all clear about what we're talking about. With respect to columns that are currently historically disclosed at time designation, if that's correct, those are interiors and the commission can't acquire and do X or Y with them. To the extent there, this proposal is asking to enclose currently exterior columns. Those are columns that we can, if we have the authority, we can close them, but they must remain in retained direction. So it's not all of them, some of the columns we can, this is on-
Oh, but I think that it's, the columns are, like Fred was talking about, just one of the many possibilities that could really not apply the experience of that space. It could drop a seal, you know, if they rent it out to some cheapo ninety-nine cent store, they're going to rent, they're going to drop the seal, like ten pence, call it a day.
Well, actually, let's first talk about that.
What would prevent someone from dropping a seal?
The landmark law is pretty explicit that, even interior work, that arguably affects the exterior, can be reviewed by the commission now. Well, no, well, so I'm trying to say, historically, we have looked at that as eighteen inches, once it sort of gets back, it's an effect on the exterior. A typical building is something that we deem to be, doesn't really affect the exterior. We are in unusual, you know, circumstances with these modern buildings, where inside and outside is different. So, for example, you know, yes, we can arguably, I think legally, exercise some control over some changes to the interior to the extent that we can argue they affect the exterior. So I don't think that affects things like the cladding of the columns that you consider interior. But I think that, to the extent they are moving walls and dividing this monumental space, I think we could take the view that eighteen inches is too close and require to reset back. Now, can we require that nothing change? I think that's probably, that's a legal question, we will deal with at the time. But I think that, now to the extent that you're talking about such a major move like that, the commission could exercise all that security.
That's good to know. Then I think we ought to do that. I think that the applicant has made a reasonable proposal as to the location of the mezzanine. I mean, for me, the thing that killed the hyperstyle hall was the outermost walls, up in the north and south, which cut all the money off from them. So all the complaints about their being dark and damp, which I agreed with, was because of, this was Philip Johnson's Ladoo period. And Ladoo was very into that, you know, the heavy, blank, flat walls. You know, there were several other buildings that he did that were also of the same kind of vocabulary. You know, and so it was a sacrifice of experiential quality to the aesthetic of the façades, perhaps, and he supplemented it, it was not a successful trade-off. But I think that, you know, we can't get rid of those, and therefore make the hyperstyle halls nicer without modifying the concept significantly and violating the intent of the design, as loud as it may be. So I think that the taking back of the retail space and the taking over of those arcades, north and south, as retail, is appropriate. But drawing on Mark's comments, I think that it would be essential that the columns be maintained as stone, if they're in our jurisdiction to do so. And I would urge the applicant, if he's come with good faith, to try to do the right thing, to keep the interior columns exposed to stone as well, even if that's not necessarily their control. And I think the applicant should, we should have language in our resolution that indicates that the mezzanine's extent is part of this, part of the reason we're approving the exterior, so we believe that it will not affect the interior in a detrimental way to have the mezzanine where it is. I think that in terms of the annex, the modifications to the back, I agree with my cohorts on the east side here. That-
Is this the west side of the building?
This is east.
West side.
I like the east side, too. The rest's our west side of the building. So that, I think that the, I think that the reworking of the garden is lovely, I really do. But I think that it has, I think that it fails on the typical standard that would apply to any modification to an individual landmark, which is that the work has an explicit relationship with the landmark. I think that the applicant has said that they just wanted to contrast with it, and that they're picking materials from other projects- that they're picking materials from other projects that Philip Johnson did in other cities in other times. I don't think that, I think with the fact that my three cohorts on the west side felt that the building, that the addition had little relationship with the landmark indicates that that effort to create a relationship has failed. And I think, and I agree with them, that it's an issue of materiality. I think, I don't think it has to do with the design. I would also suggest they look at the floor, the floor pattern. The choice to change the floor pattern, for me, was indicative of this problem, where we have a new concept at the back and it's in a way affecting into the building itself by kind of taking, taking the new, very much purposefully different design into the body of the building itself, whereas the patterning that Johnson had sought to link the outdoor spaces both inside the building and out, I didn't hear a really good argument as to why that should be modified. So I think that if they took, look, they made a major leap in reorienting their approach to be one that was more preservative in nature, and I think that that was more or less successful on the main body of the building and property. But I think that in looking at the back, they should think about how any other individual landmark should be treated and seek to make an argument, that maybe there is an argument for the white, for the pre-gas, for the stucco. I just haven't heard it. And it certainly doesn't seem to me to have the kind of relationship, the kind of interaction with the landmark that we would expect. It really feels like it's totally, totally different. And look, maybe there's an argument that Philip Johnson, as a guy who cycled through styles like he did shirts, would seek to change, you know, the design radically, just like he changed every building he built on his property. Maybe that's an argument, but I don't think it, I don't hear in this case, that case is unmade, and I think that they either modify things or make a better case to.
And Michael, with respect to the paving, do you think that retaining the paving and incorporating to the remaining landscape design could work, or they?
I personally think it could, but I don't seek to impose that on the applicant as a requirement. I just want them to engage with the historical material just like they would with any other
I share Fred's affinity for Stone Creek Grand. I've been to the quarry, Aguirre Stony Creek, for Vietnam Memorial, that are designed for my hometown, Darrell Pett, who runs the quarry, showed me where the foundation for the Statue of Liberty came from, and they're able to actually walk you through the quarry and show you the levels where all of these incredible monuments come from. So I worship this building, not necessarily because of Philip Johnson, I worship it because of Francis Ford Dennis. And that said, what this, I have always seen this building as a townsend and daughter highway purchased by a meth head who decided to cut out the back and push their stereo system. So that the butt of this thing is sticking out behind this fantastic Philip Johnson construct. And I have tried my best to like it, and I can't. It is, it has always been a sort of dark and bizarre space for me, and so there is, unlike Michael, I feel that this new space enhances that wonderful building that I love, that the material, I get to see more of it. It is, it is sort of delicate enough that it actually enhances that Philip Johnson construct for me. That said, the starkness, Kim brought up the discussion of the starkness of the white color of this thing, and it's true. If you walk over into the terracotta over there, you can see an inch of dust on each of those ribs now. And so a more neutral, more neutral colored palette there, I think would be fantastic. But I think that construct and that space enhances what we designate. And again, unfortunately, we didn't designate, as far as I'm concerned, enough on the interior, but it is what it is. And as you said, the fact that it's a retail space now makes it something that we have, we have, it's changed, we have less of a comment that we can make about what goes on in the interior. But I will also say this, every time I walk past the manufacturer's Hannover Bank, I cringe and I wanna throw a brick through the windows because it is an insult to us what happens on the inside of that building. The safe that we require it to be visible at all times is always covered with crap. I wanna throw a brick through the window every time I go by that building. I wanna be sure, you know, good faith notwithstanding, this is New York City and I don't believe in good faith anymore. I wanna be sure that we have some sort of requirement that stone columns on the inside of this building are visible, whatever is under our purview at all time.
Very interesting discussion. Agree with a lot of points that were said by my colleagues. Having spent five years seeing this building go up, I was to blossom at 600 Madison Avenue when IBM was going up and when this building was going up. I think, and I'm glad Paul is sitting here because, you know, this is the industry saying about our buildings never finish. And the struggle with this building from day one, it is a very important American architectural building, is the contract on the base, which is to say that you have Madison Avenue, and even Johnson, I'm glad the applicant showed the quote from, from the designer, Johnson, that Madison Avenue is an engaging front, and this is a disruptor. Basically, you impose, just as IBM did after the North, is that you broke the continuity of that friendliness of engaging the public. And this originated as a monumental building, the hyperscale and the arcade, it was never meant to be, you know, with golden statue in the middle. And I think, so I believe this is just one of the many iterations, the struggle to make it work at the base and at the back. And I don't think we did yet. I think this will continue to be a multiple iteration, and I think on many of the points that I made on current applications, some of it is the movement, some of it is, you know, the materiality, you know, whether a bronze would have been more appropriate in the back, even though, and I think that the suggestion of pushing back the glass, not touching the column, maybe go on any sort of detachment. I think this will be, continue to be a struggle because you have a changing retail climate, you have an appropriate monument, corporate, entity that needs to be readapted now. So, but then, I think this is that thing, and also the backspace, whether you want to connect to the IBM pavilion that's enclosed, have this affair in terms of the enjoyment of this space in weather like this. So, and all these are discussions, there are no right answers, no wrong answers. I do believe that this worth trying, don't be afraid of failure. I've come to learning in life, that's more important than to try, than to be afraid of failure and ever try. And I think we keep on, just like this country, you have to keep on believing and you will get there. So, that's my.
Thanks, Michael. Yeah, I just, Michael, on the Devon Charles point, could we go back to page one? Okay, great. I do think, Michael made a very important point, which is that on the back of this building, the current design really actually gives you an opportunity to appreciate the building, and it exposes it in a way that the original and the current configurations do not. In fact, the windows are very, in my mind, a welcome addition, and it works with what's going on on the other sides of the building. So whether or not we make recommendations to modify the cladding on the parking garage or the backings or the, the color of the cladding, which I happen to buy, because I think it's very light, and we don't want this to be heavy, or, you know, make recommendations about either exposing the brick on the inside columns or preserving the brick at the back. I just wanna underscore my sense that, I think this is actually an important move, when we power the current building in that existing architecture. And I also want to just raise, again, I'm just with that, one of the architects that worked on this building welcomes a lot of the changes that are, the changes that are being made here, and that's something for us to, you know, take very seriously. Why? I mean, if a federal-style building architect would have made it, you know, 200 years and said, you know, it's okay to change, wouldn't we do that? What's that to do with it? I think it's a recognition that, you know, which Philip Johnson conceded himself, that, you know, the building at the base was flawed, and sometimes, you know, sometimes you can, and times change. We experience this all the time when we look at the working landmark districts and the landmark buildings, and when new buildings, brand-new buildings are being introduced into an area, that, you know, times have changed and, you know, you can't observe the integrity of a neighborhood, a building, the landscape, and make some modifications that enables that building, neighborhood, et cetera, to work with what's going on today. I'm very proud of that. I think, so, you know, the commission, it was what we do, we group change every Tuesday. I think if work is purely restoration, it's done at staff level, and so our job here is to look at work that's not restoration and determine whether or not it's appropriate. And so we do that with regular buildings as well as more modern buildings. And so I think, you know, we are with a situation here where we have a building where a base has been enclosed, and I think that the option isn't to remove all of the retail or nothing, it's sort of the existing condition or the proposed, and that's what I think about it. And so I do think that there is here a way, a proposal that mitigates or maybe incrementally gets back to the spirit of the original intent, in that it lightens up the storefronts, it sets the back behind the columns, it gives a sort of deep view on Madison Avenue, the New Jersey, and some of the world in Hollywood. And at the back, it is restoring the hyperstyle double-height space, which is now in that condition, and so it's giving up some of the retail to do it from what I'm backside. And so I think that, given where we are today, I think these are steps, and appropriate steps. And I think it's, you know, it's been a very interesting discussion, both the public testimony and our discussion around the table, and I think it's a very warranted discussion. This building was, had a lot of discussion at the time that it was built, it's always had many, many opinions, and I think that that was reflected in our designation discussion invoked, as well as the discussion around the table for this application. And so I think that's important and valuable. But getting back to sort of my thoughts, I do think it is important that the columns retain the granite planning to the extent that we have jurisdiction as far back as we can. And I also think that the materiality and the new garage building, the wall and canopy should be more harmonious with the building. Our designation report talks a lot about the uniformity of material, and so I do think that there should be more of a relationship there. So I think we have a very mixed set of opinions, some very supportive, some very opposed, and many that are supportive with some modifications. I actually think we have six votes for the approval of maintaining the granite, the tiles, the columns, and we think the materiality of the canopy and the annex. And Michael, you raised retaining the floor paving, even in the concrete, so it'd be out of the landscape design, which would be not appropriate. Others feel that that should be integrated into the design. And, okay. So I think we have six to support it with those modifications. Kim, I know you felt a little bit differently about the shade of the canopy, that's okay. Otherwise, I think there's six for those modifications about the materiality of the walls and back pieces, as well as the paving.
I'll do it with staff.
To work out with staff, yeah. Yes, Michael.
Thanks. Tell the chairman how much we appreciate that presentation. It illustrated all the issues, it weren't blowing any smoke, it was really, it was fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Is that ready?
Want some water?
Speaking reading course was. In the matter of 550 Madison Avenue, the AT&amp;T corporate storage building, say, a personal plaza, now 550 Madison Avenue, an individual landmark. An application to demolish the atrium and annex building, construct a new public plaza, restore storefront infill and eliminate signage, construct and modify window and door openings. I recommend approval with some modifications. I think that, cumulatively fact, the proposed work will restore, strengthen, restore design and talent, ground core of the building, which value, which value go through public space, pedestrian circulation, and visual transparency through the building, while maintaining and strengthening the monumental scale of the tower structure. That the work of the Madison Avenue facade closure will leave existing non-historic storefront infill, the flat arches, will return its primary facade closer to its original status. That the replacement of the original bronze tenement glazing at the center of the arch of Madison Avenue facade with clear glazing will not cause elimination of a significant design feature of the building, will support the restoration of the historic design intent, physical and visual transparency through the base of the building. That the design and materials of the proposed storefront infill, which will be deeply recessed from the exterior plan of the grand piers and featuring large fans of clear glazing within bronze monuments, will recall the historic open hyperstyle hall condition at this level, as well as the proportions of the historic bronze metalwork in center arch and populous window. That the existing north and south elevations have been modified and closed over time and therefore infilling the eastern portion of these gardens will not cause the elimination of an intact open site plan. That enclosing the eastern portions of the modified north and south elevations on Madison Avenue, then the new storefront infill in exchange for consolidation and expansion of the public space at the rear of the tower, will bring the western portion of the ground level closer to its original open site plan. That the new storefront infill will only extend to the interior face of the grand piers thereby maintaining the presence of these features as free standing elements. That the proposed storefront signage of Madison Avenue consisting of internally eliminated signage on the raceways will be well scaled to the storefront openings and not detract from the monumental character of the building or commercial streetscape, and will service the building standard for future tenant signage. That the removal of loopers within the porthole windows of the north and south elevations and installation of clear glazing. and installation of clear glazing will return these openings to their original open appearance. That the size and placement of the new window openings at the fourth floor of the west elevation seem along the narrow view corridors of the 55th and 56th Streets above the public space will align with the existing pattern of the window bays in the upper floors, and will be compatible with the overall composition of this monumental tower elevation. And that the new arch opening at the west elevation will match the proportions of the arch opening on the Madison Avenue facade at a smaller scale, will provide further visual transparency throughout the base of the building. With regard to the demolition of the annex and fall, I find the four-story annex building was simply designed as a secondary utilitarian multi-use building, not intended as an integral component of the more significant tower structure, and has been altered over time, and therefore its demolition will not eliminate a significant feature of the site or detract from the architectural and aesthetic character of this individual landmark. That, take a breath. That the vaulted roof was a transitional element connected to the tower, connecting the tower to the utilitarian annex building was not a significant feature of the design. We're volunteers here tonight. In the building, the vaulted roof has little meaning or utility, therefore its removal will not detract from the tower composition. That the existing vaulted roof of the enclosed pedestrian arcade at the rear of the building has been altered over time, and was not originally designed as a significant element of the tower composition. Therefore, removing it from its historic location will not detract from the special historic and architectural character of this individual landmark. That the vaulted roof functions as a transitional element connecting the tower to the utilitarian annex building, and that without the annex building, the vaulted roof has little meaning or utility. Therefore, its removal will not detract from the tower. That the existing historic chevron patterned pavement in the north and south logias has been fragmented and deteriorated over time. That the new minimal glass canopy will recall, at a contemporary moment, Johnson's use of glass roofs and stylics will provide a greater level of light and transparency to this narrow corridor at the rear of the tower. That the minimalist design scale of the proposed canopy will not detract from the monumental volume of the tower. That Philip Johnson promoted the coexistence of different styles within his own work, and therefore contemporary design of the new garden, combined with the postmodern style of the tower, will be consistent with that ideology. That the design of the new garden, featuring precast concrete, curved wood benches, planning beds, water features, glass kiosks, will return the curvy sculpture forms found in Johnson's work and installations commissioned for the glass house. That the new canopy, pattern, paving pattern and landscape plan will relate to the circular design motifs of the building, including the optical windows, broken bediment, arch openings, as well as the Renaissance geometrics found throughout Johnson's other works. That the new Heronbone patterned paving, featuring light and gray granite, will recall the two-tone chevron painting of the historic paving. That the two new glass metal kiosks at the north and south ends of the new garden will be set deeply within the covered logias beneath the tower, and will not detract from the open space of the garden or the primary facade of the building. That the openings to be filled at the north and south logias will not eliminate significant transparent axes, and will be set within logias, therefore only be minimally visible from the public thoroughfares. That the arch openings within the logias will be infilled with solid pink granite, thereby preserving historic fabric. That the simple design of the proposed one-story garage and ladder structure will allow it to remain a discreet presence within the streetscape and will reinforce the prominence of the monumental tower body. That the stucco plating at the west elevation of the garden will be harmonious with materials and finishes found throughout the new garden, and maintain the original tenement holistically designed open space. And cumulative effect of the proposed work will enhance the special architecture and character of the glass building and this individual landmark. However, the demolition of last's vaulted historic chevron hinging in the north and south logias will eliminate significant historic features. The bright white finish of the canopy stucco plating at west elevation of the garden and metal plating of the new building introduces contemporary materials and finishes which may detract from the earth tone pink granite of the tower and are not harmonious with the postmodern style of the building. Therefore, I recommend that the historic paving also be retained, or the new paving pattern better recall the historic paving layout within the decker and quarters surrounding the site. The materials and finish of the garage, building, structure, canopy and party wall be restudied to be more compatible with the pink granite and tower of the postmodern style of the building. And the applicant will work with staff to ensure that the granite clad columns on the interior building are visible from the public right of the way.
So, there's one other thing. In addition to retaining the granite plating and the portion of the logias that are being enclosed, the proposed storefront infill is being approved or not appropriate because of its setback location, but also because of the setback of the mezzanine. So, it's a storefront infill in conjunction with the setback mezzanine that returns a more open quality to the building.
What she said.
All the paper?
Aye.
Any opposed? Your publication.